Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. In a spirit of truth and reconciliation, we acknowledge the town of Edson is located on Treaty VI territory. The traditional and ancestral lands of the Nikowak, Soto, Sixica, Pekani, Kanai, Dene, Nakota Sioux, and the Otipemiswak, Meti nations. We honor the knowledge of this land, the elders and youth which gather here, and our ancestors who have gathered here for centuries. Before I take a motion for the adoption of the agenda, we do have some special guests joining us this evening, and we're going to do a bit of a special presentation. Serving on Town Council is an honor for anybody that sits around this table. It takes passion, time, and commitment to serve your community in this manner. Each individual that serves a municipality creates a lasting difference. It all starts with council's strategic plan, which drives a vision for the community, not only for today, but for future generations. The work that each individual council member does is not often seen as it goes beyond the regular council and committee meetings. It's the committee work. It's the relationship building, both internal and external, and it's the knowledge that each council member possesses about the community, its residents, and businesses that drives those decisions. Every conversation, every debate, every decision is done with the best interests of the community in mind. Today, we recognize the incredible contributions of our outgoing council members. On behalf of the citizens of Edson, we thank these individuals for the lasting impact their involvement on council has made. You only have to go a few blocks north of here to see those contributions, with the construction of the YCE Center currently underway. It's that vision, persistence, and the ability to make decisions that make projects succeed that will benefit Edson for many decades to come. So to recognize these individuals tonight, I'm going to mention their names. They asked that they please stand and give a slight wave, and then we will present you with a token of appreciation near the end. First, I'd like to recognize Ed Moore, who has served on council from 2021 to 2025. Thank you, Ed. Next, I'd like to welcome Crystal Chachka, who served two terms from 2017 to 2025. Serving for three terms, Trevor Bevan, from 2013 to 2025. And one of our longer-standing council members who unfortunately could not be here this evening due to work commitments, serving for four terms, 15 years, Jean Trinard, from 2010 to 2025. On behalf of the town of Edson and our residents, we do appreciate all your dedication, hard work over your time on Town Council. We will now present you each with a token of recognition and thank you for your contributions that was locally sourced at the Heart of Edson Gallery and Studio. So we'll do those presentations now. So once again, thank you for your contributions. Now, as you all know, you can stay if you'd like for the rest of the meeting, or you're free to enjoy the rest of the night if you so choose. So thank you very much for taking the time to be here this evening, and we look forward to your future contributions to our community. Thank you. With that, I will take a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please. Go ahead, Counselor Wilson Lear.
I move that the agenda for the November 18th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council be adopted as presented.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That motion is carried unanimously. Can I get a motion, please, for the minutes of the November 4th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council? Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
I move that the minutes of the November 4th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns with said minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? That motion is carried unanimously. We have no public hearings, no presentations, and delegations. We will go to bylaws. We're going to start with the Draft Fees and Charges Bylaw Number 2330, presented by our CFO Denise McDonald. Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, today is the Draft Fees and Charges Bylaw 2330. First of all, I'd like to introduce you to some of my team. To my right is Tyler Goble, is our finance manager, and Kelsey Schmidt is our municipal accountant. So they'll be helping me with presentations tonight because it's all about the numbers tonight. So before you, if we can go to the next slide. So the Fees and Charges Bylaw is reviewed on an annual basis. It changes or initiated in the budget. The authority for the bylaw is under the Municipal Government Act, Section 8.1(c), and it identifies that council may establish fees for licenses, permits, approvals, including fees that may be in the nature of reasonable for the activities authorized for the purposes of raising revenue, and to establish higher fees for licenses, permits, and approvals for persons or businesses who do not reside or maintain a place of business within the municipality. The bylaw was reviewed for improvements such as consistency of language, simplicity, clarity from the customer's viewpoint, as well as existing fees, including no longer charged or and/or added fees, but not on the existing bylaw. So for the Edson District Leisure Center, we will look at the minor adjustments. We removed the pool party package that's no longer being offered, and we've added players' bench advertising as a new fee item. Under the Assessment Review Board Appeal Fees, we've increased the residential fee for up to three units from $25 to $50. And under residential for more than three units, we've increased that from $25 to $250. Nonresidential, we've increased it from $150 to $250, and this is more in line with the market, as well as it encourages that people are putting forward legitimate fees. If they're successful, they get their money back, and it discourages people just putting an appeal in for an appeal. There's considerable amount of work involved in organizing an appeal. Under Access to Information Act, we've updated it to reflect the new provincial legislation, replacing FOIP, and it aligns with the current access and privacy requirements under ATIA and PAPA. For administration fees, we've removed the double-registered payment demand, as we were not using that. And under utilities, we removed the after-hours utility service connection fee, as well as the after-hour... Oh, it's repeated, sorry. Oh, one's a connection fee and one's a disconnection fee, sorry. And then we've moved the after-hours call-out from the water section to the other utility services and inspection section. For planning and development, we've updated the terminology of commercial and changed it to nonresidential for consistency of language. And under development fees, we've renamed the zoning letter to Land Use District Confirmation Letter for clarity and consistency. For animal licenses and pound fees, we've added the cat licenses to align with our current practices and called them animal licenses instead of dog and cat. And we combined after February 28th and after August 1st categories to a single late fee category. Solid Waste Management moved the recycling base rate into the bylaw from the April amending bylaw. So last year, we had a main bylaw, and we brought back an amending bylaw with additional fees. So we're just moving that items in the amending bylaw to the main Fees and Charges Bylaw. Under outdoor recreation, we have moved the ball-diamond fee from April's amending bylaw into the main bylaw, and we've added new fall ball-diamond fees for $150 per team. With that, the recommendation is that council adopt the Fees and Charges Bylaw Number 2330, with all three readings open for questions.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for your presentation this evening. We will open the floor to council for questions. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Schramm.
Yeah, through the Chair to Administration, just a clarification. In the 2026, I know there's virtually no increases at all in our user fees and rates. Is that relevant to increases that happened in 2025?
Thank you for the question through the mayor to Counselor Schramm. In 2025, we introduced additional fees. I believe it was... I want to say 5%, but I'll go back and confirm that. 4%? I'll have to go back and check. Give me a second, and I'll check it. Here it is. We had an average of 5% utility fee increase, and approximately 3% taxation and user fee increase.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Through the mayor to Administration, thank you for bringing this forward. No issues with any of the changes presented in the bylaw. Something I wanted to just bring up, something that's been talked about in previous meetings, was regarding the cemetery rates, as whether or not they are at a cost recovery level. I do know that Administration had sent information to council regarding this. Just wanted to bring that up publicly about intentions of looking at these rates in the future, and just wanted to hear just your response about how we're going to be looking at the rates in the future, just to make sure it's for public knowledge.
Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you for the question through the mayor to Counselor Taylor. The cemetery bylaw, the cemetery department is reviewing their fees and charges. We have done some changes to the budget since September 16th, but not significant changes because they needed some time to evaluate, and we will be presenting something, GM... Hawkins. Names are escaping me tonight. We'll be presenting to council in the near future on how we will change the cemetery bylaw to meet your requests. But I can let him speak to it further.
Go ahead, GM Hawkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we'll be bringing forward a full analysis to a future council meeting in the new year, to a committee of the whole, to allow council to debate first. We'll get more feedback, and then we'll bring it back to a council meeting with actual motions, and then if there are any changes that will be put forward in the spring adjustments.
Counselor Wilson Lear?
Just through the mayor to GM McDonald. GM McDonald, public engagement showed that residents supported modest user fee increases. And just to put it for the public, why is the budget freezing all fees at this time for 2026?
Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you for the question through the mayor to Counselor Wilson Lear. It was decided to not have minimal changes to the budget in an election year to prevent if you... The idea of keeping a conservative budget in the year of an election prevents people from running for the wrong reasons, as well as it ensures that we're coming forward with a conservative budget in this time. And then the new council will have an opportunity to set a new strategic plan in the future, as well as set the rates for the next four years in the term. It was advised that we wouldn't put forward any rates to keep it reasonable. However, certainly looking for your information if you want to do so. There are further opportunities where we can revisit the budget and change rates for later on if you choose.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? So yeah, if councils have any further questions, I'll just make a couple comments. So, you know, we did the budget engagement in this kind of on the theme of Counselor Wilson Lear, and there seemed to be a desire, whenever possible, to have modest user fee increases rather than tax increases. Obviously, user fee increases ensure that those are using those services or paying for those services, and that the tax-exempt properties are actually paying for those services as well in some cases. I think we have done a really good job of trying to get our rates to a level that is very competitive with other municipalities in many areas. I do have concerns, and I've stated this over and over again, about the leisure center and the rates at the leisure center. We are in the midst of building a brand-new building, and we know that the cost of operating that facility is going to increase dramatically with the increased service level we're going to be providing. And so, I, for myself, I know that Administration has desire to do a complete review, to do comparators, to ensure that we have data to back up our decisions, which is always a good governance policy. However, the longer we wait, the further behind we get. And we are already behind in cost recovery in the facility. You're never going to be full-cost recovery, but you need to be recovering a certain percentage. So I do have some motions that I will be putting forward after first reading in order to debate, potentially looking at user fee increases at the leisure center in particular, as well as our stormwater management fees. That, since we put those into motion, they haven't increased, and we just had our stormwater management plan as well. But I'll save that conversation for when I move those motions. So with that, council, do you have any further questions or comments before I ask for first reading? All right, with that, I will ask that council give first reading to Bylaw Number 2230. Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
I move the council to give first reading to Bylaw Number 2330.
All right, thank you, Counselor Taylor. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That motion is carried unanimously. So we'll make, I have some supplementary motions before we take second reading. So Carly, if you can put it up on the screen, please. So I move that council increase all user fees except single-admission passes at the Edson District Leisure Center by 5%, rounded to the nearest dollar as of January 1st, 2026, for any new bookings that are not under an existing user agreement and that fees currently under a user agreement be increased following the conclusion of this hockey/swim season. And so I'll speak to that motion. Before I want to get into it, I want to be clear that single-admission passes are excluded from this motion, as I'll be making a secondary motion to deal with that item. When we started discussing the YCE project back in 2018, we toured facilities, and one of the important takeaways from those communities was that moving fees gradually prior to the facility being built was a smart idea. It saved communities from having a large increase when the facility was built and allowed for a more even and progressive manner of increases. We have failed to do that consistently over the years. I know Administration has a rate review on their to-do list, as I mentioned before, but frankly, with the construction of the facility and all the other day-to-day items, this matter has always been kind of put on the backboard. So I'm afraid we're going to continue to move further and further behind. I'd rather have increases to user fees and taxes. As we know, we are behind. If memory serves me correct, we've only done two or three increases at the leisure center in my eight years on council. The budget survey indicated moderate user fee increases are acceptable and preferable over tax increases. The less user fees we bring in, the more facilities are subsidized by taxpayers who may or may not use them. YCE will have more amenities, cost more, and we know we need to close that gap. I also know that we have, in the past, been reluctant to raise fees with the reduction of level of service with the closure of the hot tub, which, you know, is understandable. But with construction now underway, I think it is prudent to look at increasing those fees. We do have user groups that are in the middle of their seasons, and that's why delaying those increases, I think, is acceptable so they can plan ahead for their user groups and the people that are participating in their programs. So with that, that's my motion on the floor, and I will open the floor to debate. Go ahead, Counselor Holden.
Yes, through the mayor to council. As for another counselor, Counselor Schramm and I have both been involved heavily in the usage of the current recreation facility. I'm just looking at those rates that we do have posted now for this timeframe. And from 25 years ago when we were involved, they have barely ticked the needle upwards. And I know that our overhead costs would be there. So unfortunately, and it does... I would be in favor of this motion, in fact, because of then your... The costs are being borne by the user of that facility and not the general taxpayer instead.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Counselor Taylor?
Through the mayor to all of council to start. I understand Mayor Zahara's sort of frustration with this in terms of the leisure center, the rates, are they competitive? Are people getting bang for their buck with the current facility as is? And of course, we have, we are, you know, two years away from a multiplex opening, and we're going to see probably user rates change at that time. That'll have to be decided at a later date. I'm also challenged because I know when we first joined council, you know, we commissioned a report, if some of the members of council remember, that was supposed to sort of analyze the user rates at the leisure center, and the report did not do any of that. And that was frustrating, that we paid a lot of money and it came back and it basically said, "What do you think the rate should be?", despite the fact we had paid a third party to help analyze that information. So I understand where he's coming from. My question to Mayor Zahara is, what is your data to support 5%? Is it just, is it a round number? Is it a fair number? Are you looking at other rates? Because that is the challenge of, and you said it in your speech, the challenge of changing rates, you want to make sure you're having informed data and not just choosing random numbers. So my question, put him on the spot, is how'd you come up with 5%?
Excellent question, Counselor Taylor, and thank you for that. Quite frankly, everybody around this table knows the cost of running the facility is increasing year after year with utilities, insurance, staffing. So we need to start somewhere. The rate, you know, if we want to go through the data, it might tell us 20% is the reasonable number, and that's not going to be acceptable to the users of that facility, and I don't think would be acceptable to the general public. So from my point of view, we have to start somewhere. We can make adjustments once we get the plan. We've been waiting for year after year to do this, and we have to start because the new facility is going to open, and we can say may have an increase. It's going to have an increase. Let's be clear here. There's going to be way more staffing involved, it's going to be a larger facility, and way more amenities. And people will be happy to pay a little bit more for getting more, right? So we have to close that gap. And at the end of the day, it's, the users of the facility should be paying into that facility. It's not fair for taxpayers that may or may not be using that facility to further subsidize. I remember a report when I first became mayor, I think it was in 2018, that said that I think cost recovery in some areas of the leisure center, particularly with the pool, was somewhere around 25%. So it's heavily subsidized. I think a 5% is reasonable for some of those user fees. This is not dealing with any of the single-admission passes, which will be a subsequent motion. Counselor Positschny?
Yeah, thank you, through to the mayor and to council. I agree with the merit of your motion. I agree that our rates are going to go up. I think our community, I know our minor hockey understands that they pay considerable less ice fees than other communities. I think our most popular users of the facility, and as was mentioned by Counselor Holden, is that they know everybody's getting a pretty good deal. What have you been getting a deal on? We've been getting a deal on a building that hasn't seen a major renovation in a very long time. Forty-year-old decrepit pool without a hot tub that's falling apart. And now we've just reduced their services. You can't have even extra functions in there because they don't have the space. We've taken away half of their parking lot, making a parking-out gravel parking lot. And then now we're going to jack up your fees and try and gain 10% over two years of the build, and then hammer them with a bigger rate when we actually realize what the new facility is going to cost. So I'm not against the fees. I think the community as a whole understands and knows that with the new facility is going to come some rate increases. I personally think that, I don't think we're gaining a lot by charging more for the current facility in the current state while it's under construction. Our residents are going to be putting up with a lot. And I think that a proper analysis of what the new facility, when we have a brand-new arena, a brand-new aquatic center, we have a field house that's going to require fees, we're going to have a curling room that's going to require fees, all these things need to be taken into consideration. And we put our user groups on notice that in two years, the jump's going to be significant. We're going to give you a break for these two years, we're going to keep these fees the way they are, and be prepared, it's going to be a significant jump when facility opens, when we have a brand-new facility with brand-new operating costs. So I'd feel more comfortable, I don't think 10%, because, and as we're trying to lessen that blow, but I think most of our groups know that with new facility, we have these costs coming. So I don't see, I feel like we're charging more for less right now until the facility opens. And I think our groups in the community and the community needs to know that the new facility has expenses and the rates will have to go up. I just, I'm not sure the advantage, and maybe argue with me otherwise, but that's just where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forwardy?
So through the mayor to the mayor and all of council. I understand the reasoning, and I actually like the idea of doing, moving the fees up gradually. I would like to know, moving forward, what we expect that ultimate fee would be. I know that might be impossible to tell before the facility opens, but if you mentioned that in 2018, you were seeing our fees as already less than what other communities were paying. I think, I like the idea of moving the fees up gradually rather than have that one big jump. Because even if people know that that big jump is going to come, I still think a large fee at one time is still going to be met with a lot of resistance and more troublesome at that point. And if our fees already are much lower than other communities, I don't see a problem with increasing our fees by 5% this time.
CEO Beverage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to Counselor Forwardy. That's an excellent question with regards to what the future fees look like. That's currently what we're going through currently. We are analyzing the program, the programming space, what we need for staffing. Obviously, it's not just the utilities and everything that goes along with it, but it's as far as what this facility is going to need in order to be able to support this additional pieces to our facility. We are in the initial phases of finalizing our operating discussion, if you will. So the process will be that it goes to the YCE ownership group first, and then through the steering committee first, and then it will come back to the respective councils to be able to make a decision on. So we are very close to being able to bring this forward. This is information that we've been needing to have over the last few months. And we're just now, we just literally had a meeting in the last week to determine some more of these finite details of what this looks like and to be able to provide options that are feasible and manageable for the operating of this facility.
Go ahead, Counselor Wilson Lear.
Through to the mayor to council. You know, public engagement did indicate support for modest user fee increases, and I think that is reasonable. But I agree with Counselor Positschny that accurate data should be used to set those rates and reflect the actual costs and future requirements. And that work underway will then inform us more. And that work underway will then inform us more to not have, um, gradual, and then this, a, a big bang in two years. And I also worry with, uh, no increase to user fees now, though, um, that if we do get too far behind, are the reserve, are we going to be into a situation where we're using reserves to offset, um, those types of costs? So, um, I s- I guess I support, um, a reasonable increase right now because of public engagement showing that residents supported that. And, and to make sure that we're not getting into a situation where we're using then reserves because we're into too much of a problem.
Thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Taylor.
Uh, through the mayor, uh, to the mayor, and you say you had a subsequent motion to deal with single rate user fees. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, just so I can wrap my head around that, can I ask what that motion is? Because it may affect how I deal with this motion, uh, because right now we're addressing essentially yearly passes, uh, arena rentals, those types of things. The single user rates are more looking at going, public skating, going, public swimming, those types of things. Those have perhaps a greater impact on people using those facilities rather than a team using the facility, right? Ultimately, and I would rather see a full pool of people that can afford to be there rather than an empty pool of people who can't afford to be there.
Uh, fair enough. I will, uh, speak to that after Counselor Schramm.
5% increase isn't all that bad, and I do like the approach of small incremental increases. As a heavy user of that facility, which I am, my family are in there all the time as well, though, when we get the new multiplex coming and it's built, uh, we want to minimize that impact. There's no doubt we want to minimize that impact. And I think the general public understands and the users understand that there's going to be a higher cost to that. I'd also like to see a comparable, like, what, how does our multiplex compare to all the other multiplexes on those user fees? And that's good information that would help us in the future to make some of those decisions as to what those rates will be. Um, but looking at the 5% and not kick in till after this workable hockey season is over and swim season is over, makes a lot of sense. It gives those user groups the opportunity to plan for it, um, make sure that they know their people who are going to be using the facility, understand that a cost increase is coming. So, I understand the concept. I agree with the concept, and I think the incremental increases is probably the right way to go.
Thank you, Counselor Schramm. Uh, so to Counselor Taylor's point, um, so the, my subsequent motion deals with the aquatics area. Uh, for adult and family passes, it does not impact seniors or youth that are on fixed incomes. Um, and, um, for the very reason that, you know, we want to still be, have it accessible, I, I'd also say that we also have the leisure assist program for those that might have financial difficulties that, um, that's also available to, to families that may be of low income. So that minimizes the impact as well. Uh, go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to explain to counsel that we have put, uh, considerable money away on an annual basis to support the transition for operating, uh, our current facility to the new facility. So, um, I believe we've put almost $500,000 away each year so that, and we will continue to put money towards that so that we, because we can't anticipate the jump between the years of '26 and '27, and so we have put some money, reserves aside to support that transition, just so that you're aware.
Thank you. Um, and so I, I do want to, uh, address something that Counselor Positschny says, and I, and I do take issue with. We're jacking up the rates. I don't think we're jacking up the rates. We're, we're doing a, a moderate increase here. Um, and I, and I do agree that, yes, we ripped up the parking lot. Yes, uh, we can't have certain events there, so we're already reducing our revenue to the facility, but that is part of the construction. Um, and I just, looking, forward-looking to the future and knowing what we've learned through our tours, um, to have that jacking of increased rates hit when the facility opens, I think, you know, we can try to educate people as much as we can, but it's going to be a big hit. If it's a little less of a hit, uh, down the road, I think that's beneficial, and also it's, it's the users of the facility that need to be paying for the facility, and, um, you know, taxpayers are already subsidizing that facility quite heavily. So, uh, go ahead, Counselor Positschny.
I apologize if you didn't like my language. Um, uh, through the mayor to the mayor. Uh, so, I understand, and through the counsel, I understand the, the statements and the phasing in. This, this rate's not going to affect anything. This, this season's gone, okay, by the statement of the, of the motion as it reads. Uh, you're saying 5% this year, then, um, another 5% next year?
I didn't say another increase next year.
Yeah, so we, we have a year and a half in the build, and what's our increase going to be at the end? So we could do 5% now, and then it's 15 or 20, so is 5% enough? I mean, may I ask the question on a phase-in? Because, because realistically, and I know, I know, uh, from talking with people involved with minor hockey, that they, they do know they have a good deal, and they put that money into their development. Um, and I think there is a consensus. They know they're going to pay more when it comes. So, um, I'm not against a phased-in approach. I just, we have no, like, 5%, like, if I look at the rates on here, I've lost my spot. Um, you know, it's a hundred, if it's a hundred dollars, it's a five dollars on a hundred dollars. It's not a lot of money if you're, if you're, if we're increasing the rates, right? It's not a real phase-in. So, so let's say that we increase it by 5%, it's now a hundred and five dollars, and then we come back and we say, well, actually, the market says it's $200. Now we are hitting them with a hundred percent increase. The 5% really didn't help us. So, uh, my argument's more on the, I think our, our residents know it's coming, and I think we need to have a real idea of what our rates are going to be at the end, and we should phase it in on that. We do review these rates in the new year, um, and at the end of the season is a good time to, to look at that, and we can re, re-approach it and say, okay, we know our rates are to, to be with the market of municipalities with facilities of like. We need to be at this level. Now we're going to have to go off phased-in approaches. It's a 20% increase this year, and a 20% next year, and then we're there. That, to me, is a better way of doing it than saying, well, 5%, because 5% on a lot of these rates is, is really nominal, and I, I can, I can vote for a 5% increase, because really, most of our groups aren't going to feel it. And I think if we're going to phase it in, we should have maybe an idea what our end amount is going to be, so.
Uh, good points, Counselor Positschny, and, and I think, I chose 5% because I think it's reasonable based on the overall picture of what we're trying to do with this budget. Uh, we have a moderate tax increase. We have no other user fee increases, and for me, it's about starting somewhere. Um, because we don't, we know that as we go down this process, we're going to have a adventure that's going to increase, uh, things for us, our community. We have other projects that are going to increase things for the community. This is a year where we don't have a lot of increases. Uh, and we also know that people are having, you know, affordability issues. It's, it's a tough go out there right now. So, this is, I think, a reasonable approach to start somewhere. I don't disagree that we, we need the data, but, uh, we've been waiting for the data for a while now, and I'm not here to, to say that, you know, this needs to be the utmost priority. We have a lot of things on the go right now. Um, but I think as a counsel, we need to start somewhere, and I think this is a reasonable approach, at least from my point of view. So, go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Uh, through the mayor and all of counsel, after, after discussion and, and understanding the motion that, that's not targeting those single admission rates, and, and perhaps the next motion, we might see a little more disagreement depending on how it's, it's worded. Um, this seems like a less of an impact, certainly when you're dealing with a team standpoint of, of dealing with things. So, I can get on board with this motion, um, albeit any other increases that, we really need the data to back it up as to what the end game is. And of course, part of that end game is we need to talk to our partners at the county in terms of what their expectations are, and, and those types of things, um, as, as we get down that road, and, and, and to the members of the steering committee, uh, you know, I hope that's something you're looking at on your future agendas, that we're going to, this is going to have, although we have two years, that two years can run by pretty quick unless we're on the, on, on top of, uh, on top of dealing with this. So, dealing with this motion, uh, I can support this motion, this 5% increase, and then I guess we'll deal with the subsequent motion in a moment.
All right, thank you for that. Um, counsel, if there's no other further questions or comments, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, so my second motion is that counsel increase the Edson District Leisure Center's single admission passes in the aquatic center, uh, uh, for adult to $8 and family to $15 as of January 1st, 2026. Um, so I'll speak to that. Uh, right now, adults are paying $7, and families, I think, are paying $13. While I mentioned before, want to close the grab, we know that affordability is, is a concern, and such, as such, I've targeted these rates more specifically. Uh, we also, uh, know that in the pool itself, uh, there is a lesser, uh, level of service with the closure of the hot tub, uh, not operating. Uh, with construction underway for the new pool, I do think it's reasonable to start increasing rates for those two categories while maintaining existing rates for infant, preschool, youth, and seniors in order to keep things affordable for those on fixed incomes. Um, so that is my reasoning on that motion, and I will open the floor to debate. No questions, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Holden.
Uh, to the mayor, to, through the mayor to counsel. Um, that was one of the things that I had looked at in the, uh, budget draft here, or the, sorry, the, the, uh, draft fees and charges by law. Um, that the fee was considerably low, uh, compared to other facilities. Of course, we don't have a working hot tub, but we do have a swimming pool. Uh, I believe the sauna is still operational, uh, to best of my knowledge. Um, and the family rate was basically set at $13, and that did not cover two adults. So the kids were in for free. Part of an adult was in for free, so I would support this motion moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Any other further comments or questions? Seena, and I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion is carried. All right, uh, thanks for that. Um, and I will make a third motion. I'm all about the motions tonight. Uh, I move that counsel increase the storm water management fee charge from $2 per month to $4 of January 1st, 2026 in order to help fund future storm water management projects. And I will speak to that. The storm management fee used to be part of taxation many years ago. We pulled it out. Counsel of the time determined that it was more of a utility, uh, and that tax-exempt properties needed to make contributions to the storm water infrastructure in the community. Uh, we recently had our storm management assessment. It's clear that we have a lot of work to do in this area with more maintenance. Uh, we've also been doing, uh, some major storm water management projects. Increasing fees now will help fund this future work and reduce the risk of a more sizable increase in the future. With no increases to consumption of water and sewer proposed, I believe now is a time to address this area. It will have minimal impacts on utility rates, but supportive of, uh, of this increase, uh, primarily because just an incredible amount of dollars in there at, at one point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, we would, other than the items I've noted, we would expect to be, uh, on track at year end. Utilities, I just wanted to highlight that because it's a self-supporting department that we're tracking, uh, just slightly above, uh, target on revenues, so that's, uh, all of our, uh, utility charges, uh, charged to our, uh, residents, uh, and we just have a few items, uh, like our lagoon fees, which are slightly over budget. They're about, uh, $50,000, uh, over, uh, budget, so it's, when revenues are over budget, that's a good thing. Expenses, not always a good thing. So, that's why it's tracking just a little bit above target there. Uh, moving on to planning and development, uh, only 42% of revenues year-to-date. There was some errors in, uh, planning for, uh, economic development budgets. There was about $225,000 of revenue, uh, budgeted for, uh, however, we've only received $66,000 a year-to-date. And we'd also budgeted for, uh, three land sales in the year, uh, and only realized one of those sales as well. So that, uh, number is sitting at 42% will actually not change significantly, uh, by year-end. So then I'll move on to the expenditure section. Uh, protective services sitting at 40%, 46% year-to-date. And this is mainly because we've only made two payments to the R C M P, uh, for their policing contract, and that's just, uh, we're not behind on payments. It's just the timing difference between when we uh, received the invoice and recorded in our accounting records. So we still have two quarters remaining. Uh, we actually just paid one recently, uh, in November, just at the beginning of the month here. And the last one we get, uh, after year-end, but because it's incurred in 2025, we recorded in that year as well. So we anticipate being on budget, uh, for that by year-end. And lastly, uh, public health and welfare. Uh, and just for clarity, this, uh, relates to, uh, our F C S S, Family Community Support Services, community development, uh, our transportation, which is our Move Edson, uh, grants, and our medical facilities. So it's looking, uh, 85% year-to-date, so it looks like we're a little over budget. However, a significant grant, uh, paid to Move Edson for $125,000 is paid in full, so it looks like we're tracking above budget. Uh, however, uh, we will be on track, uh, by year-end, so. And that's all I had for, uh, this statement, but I'll just take a, again, I'll take a brief pause if anyone wants to add anything.
Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
I just want to supplement that the protective services, um, how they invoice us is they estimate us for all their quarters, and then they true it up in the subsequent year. So, uh, they trued up 24's numbers in June of this year, and so we'll have a surplus by the end of 25 because of that true-up. Uh, there's no way for us to get it into the correct year, but we have done work on budgeting better and forecasting better, so I think our budget is more accurate going forward so that it, there is not as large of a variance.
All right, thank you. Um, counsel, any questions, comments? So just, uh, through to you, Mr. Goble, uh, when it comes to protective services, in particular fine revenue, um, obviously we had the removal of photo radar in our community at the end of last year. Was that accounted for in the budget? Um, or are we feeling that, uh, pain? Um, were we expecting that revenue?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I never get it right. Uh, we did factor that into the budget for 2025.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seena, you can continue. Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
I believe we did not factor in the eight, the removal of the, uh, A T E because it came after we proposed the budget. So it was not adjusted in the spring adjustments.
Okay.
So that's why we have a large variance there.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you very much.
So, moving on, so we won't get into details of each of these, uh, funds, so this is just a breakdown of the first income statement that I showed you, where it was a consolidation of all taxation-funded, utility-funded, and land and subdivision-funded departments, um, and the activities that belong to them, and we've just broken that out into pillars. So there'll be, you'll see a statement for taxation funds, so you can see all the costs and revenues related to taxation, another statement related to, uh, utility-funded revenues and expenses, and finally, one related to our lands and subdivisions. Uh, I won't go into anything, uh, in specific detail, but again, I'll open the floor, uh, if there's anything up for discussion.
Anybody have anything? Seena, you can continue.
So, uh, moving on to our reserves forecast. So in the first column, you'll see that, uh, we have a December 31, 2024 balance of 36.6 million, uh, reserves, which agrees to our, uh, year-end audited financial statements. Uh, we have funded our reserves as of September 30th, so you'll see a spike in our reserve balance, uh, up to 41.5, uh, million. And the final column is where we expect to be at year-end. So that's after we fund all of our operating and capital projects, uh, out of reserve, we expect to be at about 32, uh, .3 million at year-end. So one measure of performance of, uh, of our reserves is whether or not those reserves are funded. So we have, currently have total liquid assets of $40.2 million. That reflects cash and investments against total reserve, or sorry, that total is 40.2 million against, uh, total reserves of 41.5 million. So you'll see there's actually a, about $1.3 million shortfall, uh, which indicates that our reserves are currently underfunded, and that's just a reflection of the pressure of the Y C multi- And that's just a reflection of the pressure of the YC multiplex project where we are having the cash flow uh expenses. While we wait for our uh funding partners to reimburse the cost, so there are delays with ISAP funding. Um, we have to be out the cash as well as when Yellowhead County makes their contribution as well, so again, just a. A temporary timing difference while we collect that cash uh for that project.
Uh, so on that note, so obviously, we are the banker and we are the lead on on the YCE project, so. Um, there are a lot of expense coming through right now and uh steel starts arriving, there'll be even more expense. Um, so I I do believe administration has been in contact with Yellowhead County and and we're working through that process. In order to ensure that we have the funds available to to fund that project, is that correct? Seo beverage, you want to speak to that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we are in discussions with regards to uh our cash flow, not only uh with our partners. But also our granting partners as well, so it kind of, it it's not just one, it's everyone. Um, essentially, when we're a municipality that is paying all of the invoices, they come in quite rapidly. Um, and so we're hitting a point where uh we recognize for and we forecast it for twenty twenty-six and twenty-seven, obviously, that's the bulk of our payments paying out. Uh, so we are addressing this as we speak.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much, and I think that's something that we have to continually keep in mind as we're doing the financial reporting that. The cash, we may look like we're in a cash deficit type of position on our reserves, but we actually have revenue that will be coming in to offset that. Uh, as this project uh continues, uh, continue on, oh, uh, Counselor Positioning.
Yeah, through the merit of counsel. Just for those new members on council, some municipalities in the province have reserves that aren't backed by cash. And they're not working on a project, so this is uh, uh, ours is explained why it's not as of the moment. But it's, uh, there's a lot of municipalities that are in a lot worse position than the town.
They show money on paper, but there ain't no money in the bank. Uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Goble.
Then uh, the last statement that'll go into detail about is um our capital project budgeted versus actuals. There's a lot of data in here, I won't go into each project uh specifically, I'll just give some high-level data here, uh, there's thirty-three total capital projects. Uh, eleven have been completed year to date, uh seventeen are in progress and five are either not started or uh delayed for various reasons. We've uh currently also spent fifteen point six um million year to date against a budget of uh forty-two million. And I'll pause for a moment, if anybody had any questions about any of the capital projects.
Any questions regarding the capital project so far this year? You can continue on.
And then, again, the last two slides or the last two pages, I won't go into detail because we've already discussed uh debt and length already. However, this just shows an outline of uh the debt that we have borrowed and the principal outstanding, so we have. Eight point six million outstanding on uh original principal borrowings of sixteen point seven million. So we're sitting right around fifty percent of our original borrowings. And our debt projection uh just showing our existing debt and how it's being paid down over the years. And how we uh anticipate new debt to be incurred um in future years for uh Firetruck. Uh, Township Road five thirty-two project and the YC multiplex uh project over the next few years from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. Any questions about the debt?
Any questions, council? Seena, you can continue.
And then the last is uh just on procurement, and again, I won't get into detail on this this report. But I'll open the floor if anybody had any specific questions about uh procurement for any of our projects. That's all I have for this evening, so thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Goble, for your presentation, council, anything further before I take a motion from the floor? Seena, I will take a motion from the floor, please. Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
I move that council accept the quarterly financial report for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Any questions, comments, concerns on said motion, Seena, all those in favor, that motion is carried unanimously. Next, the moment we have all been waiting for. We are gonna move on to the draft operating and capital budget for twenty twenty-six. Um, do we need a quick break or would we like to get right into it? Alright, let's get right into it, um, I'll hand things over, Seo beverage, you want to start?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Tonight marks an important step in the setting of financial direction for our community. The twenty twenty-six budget reflects months of work by administration guided by previous council's strategic priorities. And informed by meaningful public engagement. Our goal is to present a plan that balances fiscal responsibility with the services and infrastructure that our residents rely on. This process is about transparency, collaboration and positioning Edson for sustainable growth. This time, I'll turn things over to our chief financial officer Denise McDonald, who will walk us through the details. Of the pro- of the proposed operating and capital budgets, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Uh, thank you, CIO Beverage, uh, good evening, council, following the September sixteenth budget presentation, administration has revised the budget. The second draft, in with this second draft, we will focus our attention on the budget process. The changes since September sixteenth, the executive summary, and we will lightly review the departments at a glance. The budget impact and summary. We are now at the final step of the budget process, administration is seeking council's final approval prior to December thirty-first. It is important to emphasize that it is uh, council is not establishing the tax rate at this time, only approving the budget. Once approved, administration can then move forward on program planning and tenders effective January first. Carry forwards for projects not completed in twenty twenty-five and requiring council approval will come forward in the new year. Likely late January or early February as it ties with the closing of the books for twenty twenty-five. Then, spring adjustments, these occur after the provincial budget is released, they are typically minor adjustments. For items not available in twenty twenty-five and it will include administration additions that will need council consideration. Before setting the tax mill rate bylaw. Key timing for the variables that we need to do the tax rate bylaw include assessment finalized in February. And will be presented to council in March. Provincial budget generally is in February and the results for grants and data is released in March and April. The school and other requisitions, generally, we have them by March and April. When we have all those variables, we then can consider the tax rate calculation. And once all those variables are in, we take the assessment times the tax rate to give us the total taxation levy. Then we create the tax rate bylaw, which we will bring to council in May to authorize uh the tax assessment. And notices to be created and sent out mid-May. We will now go to the slide to introduce the changes since September thir- September sixteenth. So on the left-hand side, you will see the changes that are included in this budget since six, the September sixteenth. But generally will not in- impact the bottom line, so salary reallocations be- between departments has been done. To better reflect the salaries within the organization and to balance the ser- we needed to balance the self-serving departments. Uh, due to any changes and utility reallocations across the organization. Internal equipment rent sharing between departments was also included. Um, on the right-hand side is financial impacts uh that have ju- adjusted the budget. So nine-one-one dispatch, we have transitioned to the next generation system that we've increased. That area by fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. We've added drone insurance coverage for the fire department of four hundred dollars. Yellowhead County allocations, we've recalculated all the allocations for the Yellowhead County on our share costing, cost-sharing agreements. And that nets to thirty-five thousand, twelve dollars. We've reviewed our benefits for short-term disability and made an adjustment of forty thousand dollars. Snow removal, due to a capital project not proceeding, we've reduced the snow removal by seven thousand, five hundred. And cemetery, we adjusted the revenues by four thousand, nine hundred increase. Wilmore Park, we noticed a duplication for the caretaking entry and reduced the budget by thirty-six thousand. So this brings us back to our executive summary. And then we're proposing a two point seven percent tax levy increase, no increase in the tax user fees or utility fees. That will be adjusted now with the change that council has authorized to the, to the um fees and charges bylaw. Will incorporate that into the budget in the spring adjustments. At this time, we are assuming no growth in assessment or requisitions. The budget addresses inflationary impacts on operations and it maintains existing service levels. It continues to maintain the contribution to operating and capital reserves. And the budget draws from reserves to support the operations and a reasonable tax rate. We, our draw is one point four million, uh, which is a decrease of a hundred thousand from September sixteenth. The budget presents an increase of overall three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars in operating costs before transfers. This is an increase from September sixteenth when it was three hundred and, three hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars. Or a forty-seven thousand dollar increase. The capital budget includes fifty-two point four million in capital project costs, thirty-nine million is the YCE multiplex. And we've adjusted the trucks to sixty-five thousand and we've added floor scrubber which was missed in the budget last time. Uh, floor scrubber is fifteen thousand dollars. Amortization is is unfunded and excluded for clarity at this time. So if we look at our operating revenue, uh, this detailed worksheet outlines the town's total revenues. Some accounting changes affect year-over-year comparisons at the line item level, however, overall, the revenue trend remains consistent. While we look at the total revenues excluding transfers from the twenty twenty-four actuals to the twenty twenty-nine budget. The numbers are fairly reasonable. The changes between the twenty twenty-five budget revenues and the twenty twenty-six budget revenues before internal transfers. Is eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is a four thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollar increase from September sixteenth, so a slight change. For twenty twenty-six, the breakdown of our revenues is primarily concentrated to three main categories. Municipal taxes, which comprises thirty-eight percent, user fees, which comprises eighteen percent. And operating grants from other local governments, which is twenty-three percent. A reasonable two percent increase is added into future years for forecasting purposes. When we look at our expenses. We now uh look at the detailed worksheet on the town's total expenses. The overall line-by-line comparison is fairly reasonable and realistic. When we look at the total expenses excluding transfers from the twenty-four through the twenty-nine budget, the consistency continues. The change between the twenty-five budgeted expense and the twenty-six budgeted expenses before transfers is only three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Six hundred and forty-two dollars, again, this was a forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollar increase from September thir- sixteen. The operating budget includes a thorough review of all budget line items. The internal charges were reviewed for better methodology, this was done in three areas, equipment rent. Uh, labor, office space allocations, in addition, centralization of expenses into responsible areas such as. Building maintenance, IT and office supplies has resulted in better budgeting and resulted in some cost savings. In addition, we continue to maintain a similar amount to reserves as past years by allocating two point five percent of the department's expense. To an operating reserve and six percent to capital reserves. New budget requests totaling approximately five hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Will be identified in more detail as we go into the departments at a glance. But with an increase of only three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. With additionist of over five hundred and seventy-one thousand means that this budget includes a number of cost-saving measures across the organization. For instance, we're a part of the Power Plus Agreement with Alberta Muni's, which supports approximately three hundred thousand savings. Uh, in savings due to being locked in as well as a removal of the carbon tax. The next slide shows our uh grants were increased from three million, three point zero million approximately. To three point one million, a change of thirty-five thousand, mostly due to the Y, the Yellowhead County cost allocation area. This is increased uh in percentage from eleven to twelve percent and the overall Yellowhead County amount. Uh, between twenty-five was and twenty-six was one point eight in twenty-five and one point nine million in twenty twenty-six, so it has increased. If we now go to the capital plan. The cap- capital changes include adding the floor scrubber for fifteen thousand and adjusting the truck. Truck purchases down by ten thousand dollars each for a total of twenty thousand. Uh, overall, de- is a decrease of five thousand dollars to the capital program. Then if we look at the fleet in detail, you'll see that we've changed those items uh for the half tons as requested by council. The next slide shows our five-year capital plan. This was previously provided to council in the spring, in reality, this is a tool to help us better understand the infrastructure funding gap. It presents the town's five-year capital plan by asset category. The twenty twenty-six column has been updated to reflect the proposed capital plan introduced tonight. And the green area represents typical funding sources available to us, including the local government fiscal framework. Canada Community Building Fund Grants, it also incorporates potential allocations from the fleet equipment reserve. And reasonable allocations from general capital reserves. By comparing these funding sources against our capital needs, we identify the potential infrastructure deficit. Over the five-year period, we are currently projecting a cumulative infrastructure funding shortfall of approximately a hundred and eight point six million. I want to emphasize, though, that this is a planning tool and we will continue to refine the plan to ensure it's realistic and achievable. The plan clearly demonstrates that our infrastructure funding challenge is not isolated in a single year. It is systematic and requires sustained strategic attention. When we start looking at the departments at a glance, the first department is general government. The net change from September sixteenth is two hundred and ninety thousand due to reduction in revenue of a hundred and three. Five hundred and thirty-five dollars and an increase in expense of a hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Due mostly to internal salary adjustments between departments, so you will, you will see a related decrease in other departments where it's increased here. General government includes internal service areas such as lead services, office of the CIO, IT communications. Finance, corporate services, building maintenance, HR and requisitions, so you can see it's mainly our overhead. New budget asks include the communications banner replacements for eight thousand. Communications, public engagement software for twelve thousand, five hundred, IT server replacement for five thousand. IT uh VoIP project organization-wide for twenty thousand, two hundred plus an annual subscription for that project for twenty-two thousand, eighty. Building maintenance has a list of various projects across the organization totaling a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty. For new positions in this department, we have three positions, the municipal intern, the facility maintenance operator. Uh, with electrical certification, capital projects coordinator for facilities. Uh, we have a s- separate slide to go into those detail, costs in more detail. The next department is our protective services area. The net change from September sixteenth is sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars due to an increase in revenue of a hundred and six dollars. Adjustment for the pound and an increase in expenses of sixty-three thousand, nineteen. For nine-on-one next generation system and uh four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the pound for internal charges. Protective services department includes police, fire, disaster services, community enforcement and animal pound. Two n- new positions include two summer students for the, yeah, two new summer students. And then we can move to the transportation department.
I'm just gonna pause you, just wanna see if anybody has any questions so far. Any questions so far? Go ahead, Counselor Schramm.
Yeah, through the chair to administration, um, it's a lot of numbers being thrown over there, so bear with me, so. Uh, just on the nine on one, because we're kind of on the protective services anyway, I do see the twenty twenty four actuals were about ninety seven thousand, um, twenty seven, twenty twenty five went up to two hundred and seventeen and two hundred and seventy six in twenty twenty six, those are substantial increases. I'm not, not sure where the big jump from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five come, um, maybe administration can shed some light on that.
Go ahead. C O Beveridge, who is also acting G M of Community and Protective Services.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through to Councilor Scham, I'm going to have to get back to you with regards to the twenty four, twenty four to twenty five jump. Um, I, I will definitely get that back to council.
I do believe it was due to them, um, having redundant sensor built. Uh, but we'll get clarification on, on that. Uh, anybody else have any further questions so far? All right, you can, can, oh, go ahead, uh, Councilor Holden.
Uh, yes, through the mayor to administration. I actually just wanted to back up just quickly to the, uh, twenty six capital plan. There was a question I had regarding, um, the trail, uh, replacement and, uh, new lighting. Um, it's above the line, which is what we're looking to budget for, um, but below the line, there's the medical center, uh, roof replacement and the food bank building, uh, envelope, those are both, I believe, town owned buildings. Are they, uh, in well enough shape to be able to, uh, wait for longer uh, versus, uh, doing the, uh, trail replacement?
Go ahead, G M Hawken.
Through the mayor to council, thank you for the question and yes, so as you can see, there are some other roof projects that are moving forward this year, but the medical center roof is not. Reason being is it is in better shape. Uh, and when looking at the total dollars that we had, which is around a million dollars this year, we had to make calls on what needs to happen now versus what doesn't. Uh, therefore, we made the decision that those, uh, the food bank and the medical center can be deferred till uh, twenty twenty seven, at which we will assess at that time.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor.
Uh, through the mayor to administration. Uh, Councilor, uh, Holden brought up the, the trail system. I'm pleased that it's above the line. We brought this up in September as a, uh, uh, as an issue that it is in major need of repair. I've, I've done a couple runs, walks on there and, and I spoke to, uh, what, I, I couldn't run too, but just I walked that time. Uh, and talking to a lot of residents in the Hillendale area, uh, they use it a lot and, and it needed to be redone. Uh, what I heard from residents as well is that it is, uh, narrow at times, it is, is more narrow than, than some of our other trail systems. I know you sent some information out about some of the restructuring. I had a little trouble sort of seeing the, the map in terms of the width. Is that something that will be addressed? Cause again, if you're pushing a stroller and there's someone riding a bike, it makes it a little tight in there. So, uh, and if we're spending this money, uh, and there is space in there too. I know there's, there's space within to, to sort of, to sort of hit a, a greater width. Uh, just wanna make sure we're doing it right the first time.
G M Kettles, you're on the hot seat.
Thank you, uh, for the question, that's three, Mr. Mayor. Um, so what I don't know is the width of the asphalt trail right now. What I can tell you is the, the design drawings for that project, um, are making sure that they're twelve, sorry, not twelve, two meter of asphalt. So, um, I think they will be, um, in the sections they are replacing, but I, unfortunately, I can't confirm what the, the widths are right now, so. Um, I'll have to get back to, to council on that.
Councilor Schramm.
Yeah, through the chair again to administration. And again, I know some of these capital projects have all been approved by the previous council and I totally respect that. Just to get some clarity on a couple of capital projects would be for my peace of mind. Uh, one is the community enforcement building lease for eighty thousand and the fire training site for a hundred fifty thousand. If I just get a little clarity as to what those engage involved, that'd be great.
Go ahead, C O Beveridge.
Mr. Mayor, through to Councilor Schramm, those are actually below the line, they have not, they are not going forward. Um, they've been deferred, um, just based on our ability to manage, uh, you know, put forward capital projects that we felt were worthy of council's consideration. Um, those will be items that we will, uh, bring forward again at a future year, um, and review.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Taylor.
Uh, and through the mayor to council, uh, don't wanna certainly have a debate on this and no motion following this. Uh, on the capital plan as well, we have a, a few, uh, debentures we're looking at. That's the water diggers and the sanitary sewer line replacement, certainly the water upgrade. Um, when we look at that debenture and, and of course, that's a, that's a future bylaw i- in the new year. Uh, I would like to have a discussion certainly at that time of attaching it much the same way. Uh, we did an earlier motion tonight attaching it to our utility invoice. Uh, everybody uses water in town, I just don't wanna just put it directly onto just the general taxpayer. Um, doesn't have to be discussion for tonight, Mr. Mayor, uh, but just for future discussions and when we have that discussion, uh, when we have to pass the debenture bylaw, assuming in twenty twenty six when that will happen, so have that discussion then.
Go ahead, CFO, uh, McDonald.
Yes, our debentures, if it's related to the self-serving departments will, will be uh, expensed and be part of the user fees as we move forward. Uh, however, the reason I asked to speak was to clarify for the new counselors this capital plan and how this works. So initially, um, administration managers put forward their projects that they feel are their priorities. And then it is streamed down to above the line is what we could fund and find support for in administration. And below the line is what we have taken off the plate. So that's why there's a line in the middle and there's fifty two point four is what we're putting forward in this budget. And two point six has been deferred to future years, so it'll fall into the future five year plan.
Thanks for that clarification, Ms. McDonald, go ahead, Councilor Wilson, leader.
Through the mayor to G M McDonald. Um, I know it's below the line and your explanation is fantastic, thank you. Um, but I do wanna ask about the township road five thirty two project. The cost has increased and how is the increased cost being distributed between funding grants, developer contributions and reserves? And does the increase affect other planned twenty twenty six transportation projects? And is it being topped, it is being topped up, but what is the total budget? And I'm asking that for broader public knowledge.
Uh, probably G M Kettles will take that question, go ahead, G M Kettles.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, so, um, all things, it's, it's been pushed below the line because we're in a bit of a, a stalled pattern here on the projects delayed right now. Um, so we won't be asking for any extra funding for twenty twenty six. Um, it was originally budgeted, uh, in twenty twenty four, uh, with five hundred thousand dollars for design work, um, geotechnical and that type of stuff to, to help, uh, get it ready. Um, in twenty twenty five, we asked for another one point five million dollars for council that was approved for winter construction to start. Uh, but because we're delayed, we're not even gonna spend the, the twenty twenty five dollars for construction. Based on the, the work that the consultants or engineer consults have done so far, um, they have, the design isn't fully complete because we have some right away, uh, issues. But, um, it's all pointing to it's gonna cost more because there probably is gonna be two years of winter construction in order to get a base that'll be adequate for a road to be built over that organic material that's in that area. So, uh, the costs are going up because of that. Um, estimated between two point seven and three million dollars is what they've been telling us right now. Does that answer your question?
Um, not that I wanna get too deep into this, so, uh, but on township road five three two, um, there's a couple of reasons why this project has been discussed and approved previously. Uh, do you wanna talk about that, G M Kettles, is in terms of, um, secondary access, uh, to the landfill um, and the industrial development over there as well as future needs for bridge replacement?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's, uh, that's, that's a good question and great for clarity, so yeah, um, this was kind of triggered by a, a new development south of the tracks being the pivotal, uh, uh, plant, um, kind of triggered the, the need for secondary access and egress to that area of town. Um, as councils aware, we have operations, um, uh, being at the landfill and staff the landfill. Um, there is only one bridge crossing on fifty fourth street, um, to that area. That'll eventually need to be replaced, um, and without having secondary access into that area, we can't really take on that bridge project. Um, also, um, there's some intersection improvements that need to happen on the highway. Um, there's just all kinds of benefits from a planning perspective to have, uh, another access into that area. It also opens up some of those lands down there for, uh, current landowners. Um, when, uh, your land gets a road in front of it, it certainly opens up opportunities for future developments, so. Um, all kinds of benefits to having this road in there, it's probably long overdue actually. Um, but, uh, that's, does that answer your question, is that what you're looking for, Mr. Mayor?
I just thought it would be helpful for you members of council to understand the background on, on that particular project, it is a big budget item. Uh, with that, I don't see any other questions. I don't, so counselor or CFO McDonald, uh, if you want to continue, just cue up your mic there. Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, I believe we're at, uh, transportation services. The net change from two thousand sixteen was a decrease of a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars due to an increase in revenue of forty six thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars at the airport for the cost sharing agreement and a decrease of ninety three thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars of expenses. Uh, seventy five hundred is roads and eighty six thousand is, uh, engineering, which was salary reallocations. The transportation services department includes public works, fleet, road, uh, airport and engineering. New budget asks include bridge condition assessment for forty five thousand, road condition assessment of seventy thousand. Feel free to ask questions anytime. Uh, I apologize for bulldozing through this.
Uh, council, any questions for transportation? Seeing none, I will continue on, go ahead.
Okay, social programs and services, we have a net change from September sixteenth, a decrease of forty eight thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars due to a net increase in revenue of five thousand dollars, two hundred, five thousand, two hundred and fifty eight dollars. Social programs include F C S S, uh, which is the family community support services, medical facilities, cemetery and community development. New budget requests include in the, under the cemetery area, new software for fifteen thousand. The next department, if there's no questions, is recreation parks and culture. The net change from September sixteenth is a decrease of twenty three thousand, eight hundred and thirty one dollars due to an increase in revenue of twenty three thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars. The parks, rec and culture groups together, community services admin, parks, leisure center, Griffith, Griffiths Park and culture services. New budget requests include parks, asphalt trail maintenance of forty thousand, parks playground maintenance of ten thousand. Under culture, we have the Echo Red Brick request for increased annual funding for staffing of ten thousand. Echo Red Brick, Brick request, one time funding for ca- their capital improvements of fifty thousand. And for new positions, we include hours for guest services, additional hours for guest services, not necessarily positions and temporary admin for eleven month term. Open for questions on that area.
Go ahead, Councilor Schramm.
Yeah, through the chair to administration, um, just a notice on the parks revenue, it's a substantial decrease from the twenty twenty five to the twenty twenty six budget from a hundred and sixteen, five down to ten thousand. Is there a rush on that?
Somebody able to answer that, I think it's probably through grant funding, but, uh, for.
We'll, um, we'll look up what that is and then we'll, before the end of the session here, we'll, we'll get an answer back to you.
G M Kettles?
Yeah, thank you, sir, I'm gonna pull up the cost center here, I'll, I'll, but as soon as I find it, I'll, I'll weigh in.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Councilor Holden?
Uh, through the mayor to administration, I, just when you were going over the parks, uh, item, you had mentioned a forty thousand dollar, uh, funding for, uh, the trail, uh, repairs. That's in addition to the three hundred and eighty thousand for the replacement of that section. Is that forty thousand gonna be enough to do the rest of the, uh, park system itself to do the regular maintenance required?
Think that's just, uh, to do an assessment of all the trails, so we have, yeah, yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what that was for, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed the question, I was looking at parks.
Well, it's happening, uh, go ahead, uh, G M Kettles.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so in terms of the parks question, um, it looks like the big thing, it was, is it a transfer, the transfer from reserves? So we had some reserve transfers, that, rev, transfers in to cover projects are recorded as revenue and we don't have those reserved transfers this year because there's no projects for them. So that's why there's a big discrepancy in the revenue, there's, there's not a lot of the revenue sources in parks actually. So hopefully that answers that question. And then I was looking at the budget too, but I think the question for Councilor Holden was about, uh, the forty, the money for parks maintenance or trails maintenance, sorry?
Yeah, I, I thought it came across as being forty thousand dollars for the, uh, no, I thought that the forty thousand dollars mentioned was for, uh, trails maintenance. Uh, in addition to the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the, uh, repairs that need due. And I'm not sure, is that for an assessment of the trails or an actual repair cost, uh, maintenance cost?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, yeah, the forty thousand dollars is an operational cost that's gonna be for staff to go out and do some more repairs to the trails that are failing. So it's, it's adding a bit more money to do that type of work.
It's more of a maintenance item than, uh, necessarily a rebuild or a, oh. G M Kettles?
My apologies, Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, managers in the background helping me here for certain questions, so let me read here what I got.
You did that on purpose.
Uh, through the mayor to, well, to administration, uh, hearing the updates at the red brick, uh, supportive of those updates, uh, you know, as a, uh, with the drama department, uh, at the school, I've used the red brick a lot and, and supportive of those, those additions and the, and, and the, the upgrades there. Uh, and that was within culture, uh, I know you mentioned red, red brick. Did you mention the, the operating cost of the library and the museum, which would also be in there? Uh, whether or not, I'm sorry if I missed that, i- is whether or not their requests for funding this year were, were matched and, and for the twenty twenty six budgets.
All right, we'll hand things over to administration. Give them a few moments just to pull up that information. Go ahead, CFO McDonald.
Yes, it does include the museum as well as, um, sorry. Uh, it includes both of them. However, I believe that, uh, they reduced initially, there was a higher increase for the museum and they pulled some of that cost, that increase back. So those ones were a little more realistic in comparison to the previous year.
You able to give specific numbers in terms of?
Not off the top of my head, but yes, we can get those.
Councilor Taylor?
Yeah, it, it, the specific numbers is fine, just wondering if the requests that were made were, were matched essentially.
Go ahead, C O Beveridge.
Mr. Mayor, through to Councilor Taylor, yes, the requests that were submitted were funded within the budget.
G M Kettles?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, sorry, there's lots going on here. Um, I do have an answer for, uh, Councilor Taylor's question earlier about the width of the trails. Um, the trails in that area currently are one point two meter, so they will be wider. Not, not, not the whole system, but in the patch, the places we're fixing it, and then there's a big about four hundred meters that we're replacing, it will be wider.
So you will have passing lanes when you're running with your stroller? With the bear coming, um, all right, thank you. With that, uh, we'll hand things back over to Ms. McDonald. Uh, go ahead, C O Beveridge.
I'm wondering if we can have a comfort break, please?
Absolutely, lots to digest, uh, so we will take a ten minute recess here. All right, thank you very much, everyone, for that brief break and we'll hand things over back to CFO McDonald.
Okay, if we are, uh, finished with questions on rec, park and culture, then we will move on to planning and development. Okay. Okay, planning and develop, planning and economic development. Net change from September 16th is a decrease of $29,510 due to total expenses decreasing. New budget requests include planning, having the IDP with the Yellowhead County cost-sharing. The project is $100,000, and it's 50/50, shared between the town and the county, and the county has approved that project. Any questions? Then we will move on to environmental services, so this is our utilities area, that is a The net change from September 16th is a decrease of $35,360 due to decrease at the landfill. Energy, environmental services include water, wastewater, which is sewer, waste collection, waste management, which includes landfill and recycling. New budget requests for '26 include wastewater, which is vapor testing pilot for $25,000, and landfill, we have a groundwater monitoring well replacement for $10,000. Is there any questions? Moving on to subdivision land, and there's no change from September 16th in this area. So, the next slide shows our, oops, positions included in the 2026 budget. The first position in the general government area includes a municipal intern, it's an 18-month term, '26 budget grant is grant-supported, and the '27 budget is supported by a transfer from reserves. So, there's a cost to the municipality of 50, approximately $52,000 in '27. Facility maintenance operator, electrical certification for $132,100 is under the government services area, and capital projects coordinator for the facilities of $138,600. Under the fire or protective services area, we have the two summer students for $33,572. The leisure center has additional hours for guest services of $10,000, and there's also a temporary admin there for 11-month term of $65,000. Total for new positions is $439,272. Please note that these total costs include salary, health benefits, federal and provincial contributions, pension where applicable, and the required equipment and position-specific training for those positions.
So, with that, we'll open the floor to questions, and before we take questions from council, maybe I'll just ask CEO Beverage to maybe review these positions for the new members of council. When previous council discussed this, we actually did remove a position from this list in order to focus our attention to some specific areas, so CEO Beverage, if you wouldn't mind speaking, particularly with the, the larger ones there, facility and capital.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, noting just the municipal intern, that came before, came before council at our first meeting, our first official meeting. This will support general operations, so an administration intern, I believe we spoke about that at length during that meeting, but we are, I, I did receive a bit of an update when I was at the Albany Municipalities Conference, we should know in December if we were successful in our grant application, so that's before the minister. The second position is facility maintenance operator, and noting electrician, so what that is, is that, it's one of the things that we looked at when we reviewed the facility lifecycle assessment, is that we had an immense amount of maintenance, et cetera, and all of this work to do with facilities, and we had one facility supervisor, and two laborers to assist that supervisor. And when we went through the process of determining what was going to be appropriate in order to manage the projects, you know, there's two positions that came out of that. The first being electrician, so GM Hawken and his team, and I'll let him kind of go into the specifics, because he's, they've spent a lot of time with regards to what specifically is needed in this, and I think it's better suited that he speak to this, if that's okay.
Go ahead, GM Hawken.
Thank you, Mayor. Through the Mayor to council, so for the electrician, we looked at overall contractor costs from '24, '25, and then what was projected for '26 and beyond, based on the lifecycle assessment for facilities. So, for the new council, there was a report called the, if, if you hear us refer to the facility lifecycle assessment, this was an engineered report for 13 of our major facilities to go into their condition, what the issues are, what we're going to have to fix, in order, and this is what guided us with our capital projects for the next five years at this time. So, when we looked at the contractor costs for electrical work specifically, the last two years, it has exceeded over $100,000, and there's an estimated cost of about $160, if we were going to just do external costs, $160,000, I should say, sorry. Therefore, there's a, one, the added benefit of bringing an electrician in-house, has the ability to lower those external contractor costs, as well as get us a third maintenance labor. We have 18 major facilities that are being managed, or not managed, maintained by two people. This is not allowing us to do the proactive work that we are trying to get ahead of, in order to lower these future capital costs. Therefore, this maintenance operator will not only have the electrical background, but they'll also be able to do regular maintenance as well, to help improve the overall program. So, the rationale is twofold for this position, one is it is going to lower our external electrical costs, second is it's going to improve our proactive maintenance program as a third maintenance operator. For the capital projects coordinator for the facilities, this stemmed from the extensive work that we have projected for the next five years on our facilities, based on that lifecycle assessment. We know we have, it's an estimated six to, well, I'm gonna estimate six to eight million dollars worth of work that we need to put into our facilities, based on that assessment. Therefore, we need someone outside of the current manager to do the project management, the procurement, the contract, the communication with the contractor, in order for our manager to still do management duties, manage the staff, as well as do the, the other duties of, of what the manager does. So, this is more of a capacity, attacking the capacity issue in facilities of, again, one manager trying to manage 18 major facilities, and the capital projects that come with it. So, that's the rationale for the two positions. If council has any questions, please ask.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll stop there on the capital projects and maintenance, if, and municipal intern, if you have questions regarding that, and then we'll move on to the, the rest of the positions here. Does anybody have any questions regarding those positions? Seeing none, do you want to speak to the summer students and the other, other positions? CEO Beverage?
The fire summer students is a bit of a pilot project. Fire smarting is an important aspect of our operations in this community, and one of the things that we were looking at was opportunities to take a little bit of more of a proactive approach. One of the things that we see is that, in some of our trail systems, and some of the areas where our public are trying to recreate, is that there's, you know, there's an opportunity for individuals to potentially hang out in our trail system, and the intention is to clear some of those areas in, to allow for safety for our public, also do some of the retreatment. So, we apply for FREA grants, and that was, again, last meeting, and essentially, that does, you know, broad-based, if we do receive the grant, it's typically able to, $200,000 grant that we do receive, if we get it. So, we just looked at this as an opportunity to try this this year, to have two summer students under the responsibility of our fire chief and deputy fire chief, to handle some of the fire smarting within our trail systems, within our public areas. We're excited to see where this will go. Obviously, this is not for our kids that are just coming out, you know, just average person that is, but obviously, will be very much supervised, and probably looking for a more mature student, if you will. The second position is leisure, leisure center guest services, so this is strictly just ours. This just allows for more ability to be a part of the, be there when the guests are there. So, there's times when you go to the leisure center, and there's no one at guest services, and so this is just to enhance that as well. Further is the temporary admin, so the temporary admin assistant is for, at the recreation center, and part of this is stemming into the capacity that I've spoke about previously, and I'll just, I'll bring this kind of full circle with regards to the YC multiplex, we've talked about that a lot, a lot tonight. It's no secret that this project does add a lot of extra work to this municipality, and this, of course, the operating center is one place where this does have impact. And what we're finding is that, due to complexities with dealing with contractors, we have a facility, leisure center manager there, and essentially, there's oftentimes that, that individual's dealing with issues that are occurring as they speak, et cetera. It, this will allow for some planning, and some opportunity for some administrative support for this individual, and we're trying it for 11-month term, before we bring the full proposal of the, the staffing model to the respective councils for consideration for the YC multiplex. That concludes the staffing.
Right, council, open the floor to questions. Go ahead, councillor Wilson Lear.
Through the Mayor to Administration, you just answered every single one of my funding questions for the new positions in 2026, and thank you so much for that. I have another public engagement result question, just for broader knowledge, again. Our public input showed demand for more community enforcement service levels, and I just want to ask for that broader knowledge, why were those not reflected in staffing additions, and what operational risks or service level impacts result from deferring these positions?
Thank you for that question, we'll hand things over to CEO Beverage, CAO Beverage.
Motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to councillor Wilson Lear. Thank you for the question, with regards to the public engagement about the enhancing of the enforcement services, one of the things that we talked about previously, and, is that the priorities that I've set forward for this organization, as far as this particular area, a service level review is something that we want to do, and one of those things, when we deal with service levels, is that we want to have, it goes back to data, I will always drive back to the data to support the decisions that we put forward positions for this organization, and essentially, that is a part of the process, and the service level review is where we're starting, is the community services, and I think that we'll be able to evaluate things, and bring back something worthy of council's consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Fogarty?
Through the Mayor to Administration, just two quick questions, one I think is probably pretty simple. The municipal intern, if we're not successful in that grant, then we're not going to move forward with that at all, I would assume. This one, and maybe this is my inexperience here, but if we're hiring a temporary admin due to the fact that our manager is overwhelmed with some of the work that is required, is there anything in our cost-sharing agreement that helps us to, that Yellowhead County can help with a position like this?
Go ahead, CEO Beverage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to councillor Fogarty, great question. So, that should be noted on this slide as well, that is a cost-sharing position, so essentially, it's, it's six, 35, 35%. So, understand, we are working through, with our partners, we are always having discussions with regards to support that we may need, and I find that, as we've been moving through this project, there have just been unexpected circumstances that have arisen. To be fair, also, there's also staffing challenges at the leisure center that are consistently occurring, and it comes back to just the, the overall staffing complement that is there, and what the staffing are doing. The administration, like, to be fair, administrative assistance, I couldn't live without the, the assistance of, of the, you know, in our organization, and this is an area that hasn't ever had one. We have a booking clerk that is there, that does all of the scheduling for all of the ICE, and also deals with all of the programs, et cetera, and then, of course, we have the, the aquatic center as well. So, this is to support the, the recreation manager in being able to help with managing through just the normal administrative tasks, that throughout the day are just not able to get to, and, and why, and like I said, there's impact because of the project, but also just, it's just the cir, timing of circumstance of things not, the staffing being challenging at this point in time.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Fogarty.
And again, through the Mayor to Administration, I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't speaking out against the position, I just wanted to make sure that the funding wasn't all falling, falling on us, and again, maybe it's my inexperience with how the funding agreements work, so, so I'm in favor of, I can definitely understand what, how that would be needed. Thank you.
Councillor Schramm?
Yeah, through the Chair to Council and Administration, I'm really happy to see some of the stuff on this, on these positions, particularly the facility maintenance operator, it's always been, from previous years, an intent to have some type of adjournment in these roles, and it's great to see it's finally happening, and as far as the fire summer students, I'm all in on that one, so.
I thought you were gonna vote against that. Council, any further questions for Administration on, on the positions? Go ahead, councillor Piszczny.
Yeah, through the Mayor to Administration, why is it temporary, the intern position?
Admin position. Go ahead, CEO Beverage.
Thank you, through the Mayor to councillor Piszczny, just due to the staffing model that is, is going to be proposed, just wanting to make sure that we weren't setting forward a full-time position and tying our hands at this point, we really want to understand what we need as a, as a group, before we propose anything, so we didn't want to, you know, have to deal with a full-time position, and have to end that position, or do something else with it, it was just to be cautious.
Thank you very much. Council, no further questions, we will go back to Ms. McDonald.
Budget impact in summary, so we can go into the numbers now, this is, if you remember back to our orientation with Ian McCormick, council should be focusing on, he had suggested council focus on the dollar impact to the taxpayer for budget purposes. So, this is the residential impact, based on 2.7% municipal tax rate increase, it compares each house, what the house would have paid in 2025, and then, holding the requisitions for education, Evergreens Foundation, the same determines the impact to the property owners. So, you can see the difference between '25 and '26, on a $250,000 assessment would be $4 a month, a $350,000 assessment would be $5 a month, and a $450 assessment would be $7 a month. Questions on residential? If not, I'll move to non-residential municipal tax impact. So, based on 2.7% municipal tax levy increase, again, and assuming no change in the assessed market value, or educational requisition, school requisitions, we would compare each property, what they paid in '25 compared to '26, so a half a million dollar assessment would increase $18 per month, 1.5 million in assessment would increase $54 a month, and $2 million assessment would increase $72 per month. And questions on non-residential? So, now, if we move to summary and next steps, so this is council's opportunity to provide direct... So now, if we move to summary and next steps, so this is council's opportunity to provide direction on the two thousand and twenty-six budget. This includes a two point seven tax levy increase, no increases in the tax user fees, no increase in utility fees, and the two thousand and twenty-six capital projects of fifty-two point four million. It is important to note, council is not establishing the tax rate at this time, only approving the budget. Once approved, administration can move forward with programming and planning and tendering effective January first. Again, carryforwards are late January, February, spring budget adjustments are late March and early April. And the tax rate calculation is May. So you'll have an opportunity to make changes in the future. Thank you. I will pass it back to mayor and council for discussion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for that thorough presentation and the entire finance team I hear this evening as well for joining us and our general managers and everybody involved in this process. You know, I think it was stated earlier, this budget really reflects the previous council's strategic plan. So a lot of this has been reviewed previously. And I know for new counselors, it's been a lot to try to get up to speed, kind of like drinking from a fire hose. And we have some new fire hose in the budget, so it's, it's all good. Really, for this new council, our strategic plan is going to be discussed in the early spring and adopted. And that will drive the two thousand and twenty-seven budget, which may, may look similar or may look a lot different. So I guess, first of all, I'll ask if council has any questions. Typically, in this process now, what will happen is council will have the opportunity to make any adjustments through motion. And I do want to give council a few minutes to kind of absorb all the information here and see if there's any changes you want to make to this budget. But before we do that, I'll just ask council if you have any further questions for administration at this point in time. Seeing none, I'm going to just call about a ten-minute recess, just for people to absorb all this information. And if you do have a motion that you're thinking that you'd like to put on the floor, you can see Ms. Williams in the back and she can help you with that. So she's prepared moving forward. We will resume at around nine twenty-two. All right. Thank you, everyone. And we will resume the meeting. Ms. McDonald, do you have something for us?
Yes, I wanted to make a clarification on the planning and economic development area where I said new budget request. The I D P has been approved by the county. It has not yet been approved by the county. It has just been included in the budget, but it's not yet approved.
Yes, they're, yeah, they're still going through their budget process. All right, council, we had a moment to break there. And I think we have a few motions that are going to be made here this evening. So council, open the floor. Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Through the mayor, I'll, I'll start off with a motion and then, and then speak to the motion. I move that council direct administration to bring forward a barrier-free pedestrian crossing ramp program for consideration in the two thousand and twenty-seven budget. The motion's up there. I'll speak to it. So throughout the last few months, speaking with residents in the community, having, I call them accessible curbs. Administration calls them barrier-free pedestrian crossing ramps is the technical name, but making them accessible curbs. This is something that's come up in the last year and certainly at, at the doors over this past campaign is, is a necessity within our community. We currently spend about a hundred thousand dollars on sidewalk repair, which doesn't include any sort of changing them to barrier-free or curb, curbside. I think we did, according to administration, we did one in this past, past year. Hurt concerns from residents that we saw sidewalk repairs happening in and around curbs, but then nothing replacing to make those curbs accessible. Wanted to include this within this budget. The challenge is, is that if we do include it in this budget, then we're off kind of doing it haphazardly or willy-nilly. I think we're going to need a little more of a plan to do that. And this will give administration some time to think about funding dollars of what we want to put forth in the twenty-seven budget. And also look at what curbs need to be accessible, right? Perhaps looking at addressing ones nearer to schools, nearer to pathways that are heavily used. And they make it accessible for everyone, but especially people that have mobility issues, people in wheelchairs, and people pushing strollers. And I'll, I'll challenge anyone to know, like, if you're able-bodied, you have no concerns. But as soon as you're challenged with mobility, whatever that challenge is, it can be a struggle. So would have liked to have concluded this in two thousand and twenty-six. But if we did that, then I would be afraid that administration would be out there just choosing random curbs and not really having direction with a plan with that. So that'll, this motion gives time to sort of plan what that would look like and budget a cost in the two thousand and twenty-seven budget.
All right. Thank you for that, Counselor Taylor. And we will hand things over to Counselor Pasicny.
Yeah, through the mayor to Counselor Taylor. Maybe I'm looking for some clarification. Is this motion to look at areas where we don't have ones existing to improve the ones we have existing? Because I know when they replaced the sidewalks on Edson Drive and Eighteenth Avenue, when they did both those crossings, they made them to very beautiful, fully accessible areas. And I do know some of our, our barrier-free ones have a bit of a bump at the bottom and they're not actually that barrier-free. So I'm just kind of maybe looking for clarification of, are we replacing all of them? Doing all of them? Or are we just maybe advancing the program? Maybe some clarification, please.
So we'll go to Counselor Taylor and then G M Kitlitz.
Through the mayor, back to Counselor Pasicny. My understanding is that the current sidewalk repair program can repair any existing barrier-free areas, even ones with lips and stuff like that. And that's my understanding to G M Kitlitz when he gets, when he speaks. This would look at more transforming the ones that are already a regular curb into one that's more accessible. Does it make sense?
G M Kitlitz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to confirm a couple of the points that have been made by Counselor Taylor and Counselor Pasicny. So if, for example, it's part of the sidewalk program that's funded for a hundred thousand dollars, if a straight-faced curb crossing exists, it needs to be repaired. Let's say it's up for repair. We would absolutely turn that into a barrier-free at that point in time. Or fix the ones that you had mentioned that might have a higher. So I just wanted to make that clarification that although we're not out purposely looking for ones to, to install, if it comes up on the list as a repair or as a replacement, we will replace it with a barrier-free. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Fogarty.
Through the mayor to Counselor Taylor, I heard similar concerns on the campaign trail. So I'm glad you brought this forward. I heard, and I heard both concerns, both a lack of accessible curbs and ones that were technically accessible or were at one point and have shifted and, and are troublesome. So I think both of those things need to be addressed. So I, I, I like the motion you've put forward.
Thank you. Counselor Pasicny.
Yeah, through the mayor to, to Counselor Taylor and council. Accessibility is always a challenge and, and our earth is a challenge in this area and heaving. There was programs done in the past where we've had a coring company go around where we had, where we had a, instead of replacing a sidewalk, they just corred down one side. So now it was a smooth and it removed the bumps. I think really, they really, at the end of the day, I think we, we, we were pretty light on our budget for a few years back on the, on sidewalk repair. And I think maybe the, again, for this, it does need, I just, it's just not feasible to replace all of them. And I know when they do replace them, they replace them with the, the proper ones. And the new ones look amazing. The, the current standard is way better than the nineteen eighty standard. So I do support it. I just, maybe there's a, just a bigger budget for sidewalks overall as, as accessibility being the backbone of that.
All right. Thank you. Do you have something you'd add? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, just through the mayor. And when we, to Counselor Fogarty's point about the, the lips that perhaps need improvement, to anyone listening, if there is concerns with that, the reporter problem app is, is the place to go for those changes. And, and then that's budgeted within the hundred thousand dollars to address those, right? But again, this, this motion is looking at targeting certain areas around town. What that number is and how many we can replace is yet to be, yet to be determined. We'll find that out next year when administration comes back.
G M Kitlitz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So appreciate the, the opportunity to build the program. I think it's important to understand that. We have to understand how much there is. Because as Counselor Pasicny said, we probably can't do them all in one year. But if we know that we have forty to do, right now, the tender prices for those installations last year were about three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars apiece. So based on how many we have to do, we can come back with a plan to say over the next four years, five years. And conceivably, I guess, I don't know this for sure, but it is conceivable, part of our exercise will be to look at this. I think this is our third year of the sidewalk program. So that's three hundred thousand dollars we've spent on sidewalk repairs the last few years. We made a position where, you know, we don't need to spend that much anymore. Maybe we can allocate some of that funding towards the pair ramp program. So we'll do that analysis and make sure that when we come back for two thousand and twenty-seven, that we have that data ready for council to consider.
Thank you for that. Even though Counselor Taylor was very unsupportive of my previous motions, I, I am going to be supporting this motion. You know, the, to go back in history, a few years ago, we had some sidewalks in town that were in very poor shape. And when I did some investigating, I found out we didn't actually have a sidewalk repair budget. It was all lumped in into just overall maintenance and road repairs. And of course, road repairs, that swallows all the money. And sidewalks are often left unless they were extremely dangerous. So council of the day elected to allocate a hundred thousand dollars. And to see the significant amount of work that's been done over the last number of years has been great. Cement's expensive. Doing these projects are very, very expensive. And I'm in support of this, obviously, for the accessibility concerns. And you, nothing is more concerning when you see somebody that is challenged, mobility challenged, and they're struggling to get up a sidewalk or they, they come off a sidewalk and there's a hump and then they fall over and, or having difficulties, right? And I've seen that. So we do need to address this. And I am glad that we are going to look at a program. Further to that, and this is not going to be part of this budget, but I will be talking about our strategic planning. And I, this is something I talked about eight years ago, is we have sidewalks to nowhere. And so we need to start connecting our sidewalk network. You have certain neighborhoods that have a block of sidewalk, and then there's no sidewalk for two blocks, and there's another block of sidewalk. Like, I don't know where the planning and all this went years and years ago. And the highway is a perfect example of that, where you're walking down the highway and then all of a sudden you have a block of.
Starting with the motion, then I'll speak to it. I move that to council direct administration to bring forward a road maintenance program. Okay, to speak to it. This was something that was brought up this past council term. And certainly in the budget, when we had budget talks in September. We've done a relatively good job in the last few years of purchasing equipment, crack sealer, those types of things to get on maintenance. Potholes, if there's a pothole, our team can repair that. You know, in the summertime, they can repair it the next day. That's really quick. The challenge we have in town, and again, going to the doors and hearing from a lot of people, i- is not the potholes, it's, it's not the cracks, it's the heaves or the humps, whichever you want to call them. We got a heave and hump problem in town. And how many people drive over basically ski jumps on the way to wherever they get to, to go? To address these, we need a program in place or a plan in place to do this. Going back to the previous motion, we just can't just do it willy-nilly. We can't just say we're addressing these heaves and not these ones. We have to have why. And some are more complicated than others. Some, yes, we could perhaps do it with internal crews shaving them down. Some may take a lot more planning and may, may even lead to more reconstruction than maintenance. But to do this, we need a plan. There is no date attached to this. And there is a challenge with that. I spoke with administration and it is a tough thing to put a date on. I, I wouldn't like to wait too much on this in terms of this. Bringing it forward in, in the two thousand and twenty-seven sort of budget is perhaps appropriate. But of course, there's data that is needed to be collected to support how we're going to maintain this. So that is, that's my motion. And there you go. Thank you.
I'll go to Counselor Pasicny before I make my call. And go ahead, Counselor Pasicny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to Counselor Taylor, to council. I'm speaking my language, Counselor Taylor. I've been saying this for a while. I still get angered when we don't tar the roads. Heaves and bumps come from water getting in your road base. And that is what I've been saying for years. And I'm all about this. I'm just, I'm confused why we're talking. I support the motion. I'm just not sure why we're having this motion in the budget meeting right now if we don't have dollars attached to it. We don't have a plan for this year. And I know, I like the idea. And maybe, maybe you'd need a further amendment to bring it back at a, at a committee of the whole meeting to discuss this kind of a program that we can get it added to our agenda. And we can give administration time to come up with maybe some timelines. I just, I, I like the motion. I'm all about this. And our roads hundred percent need to be maintained, you know, and I, I'm all about it. I just, I'm just not sure how this is fitting into this, into this meeting. And so maybe, I don't know. I'll leave it at that.
So do you want it or don't you want it? Counselor Taylor.
Through the mayor to Counselor Pasicny, I completely hear where you're coming from. In a perfect world, I would like to implement this into the two thousand and twenty-six budget. The problem is, we just don't have the data, the research, the history of the plan to, to create that plan. And that's going to take time, right? And a lot of resources. And that's, I, I am, I, I as well am challenged with, with, with perhaps a, of course, this is written as an open-ended timeline. I wouldn't like to put, you know, I, I don't really like the idea of it being open-ended myself. Perhaps bringing it back at a future community of the whole about how that plan is created. And this discussion came about in our last budget session. It was either G M Kitlitz or C A O Beverage that sort of made this comment with regards, when I spoke about the humps and heaves program. And if either one of administration, I know this is my motion, but if either one administration could speak to perhaps other municipalities that perhaps have a plan and like this in place and, and like the time and sort of the data that perhaps is.
I think we're getting a little bit into the weeds.
Okay, that's fair enough. Okay, okay, that's fair enough. But I do hear your concern about when to bring it back and have that discussion.
I think, I think bringing it to a committee of the whole is probably a really good idea, Counselor Pasicny. Go ahead.
Yeah, through to the mayor, Counselor Taylor, administration and so forth. I do support this. What I'd like to more say is I'd rather not study how to do some maintenance right now. If you, if maybe amend the motion to, or ask administration what our additional budget right now is required, just to get it, everything tarred. You know, just to finish all the crack filling. Like, that's something that we could add to this meeting that would be immediate. That says, oh, we're fifty thousand dollars short on crack filling the entire town. That, to me, has a lot of merit. That's immediate. That's not saying I need to study, because then it takes two years for the study and now we're two years behind in maintenance. So simple, simple, let's start with the basics. That, that, to me, is something we could add in the motion. But we really should have a comprehensive plan or discussion on this. And it's probably not for this meeting.
Yeah. So I think if you're favorable to this, Counselor Taylor, maybe just to amend your motion that council direct administration bring forward a road maintenance, forward a road maintenance program discussion to a committee of the whole prior to the, no, prior to spring budget adjustment. And then we can have a discussion, give some feedback to administration, and that will help inform the next steps in this. Because my motion is very similar to yours. It looks at it from a different lens. So that could get everybody's discussion and maybe that would be more clarity to administration. Does that sound acceptable, CEO Beverage? Yeah, okay, I got a thumbs up. So would you be okay with that friendly amendment?
Yeah. So the council direct administration bring forward a road maintenance program discussion at a future community of the whole meeting prior to the spring budget, spring budget adjustments or final budget? Yeah, for the whole meeting, okay. Well, that would have got interesting if you'd done that. Does that give? And I'm, and I'm satisfied with making those. I, I, again, I would, I, I'm glad that we're putting some timeframes on this. And I do hear Counselor Pasicny's point about like, let's get out and let's just seal all the cracks and things like that. That's fine. And again, crack sealing and tarring, that's fine. I, I really addressing, want to address the, the bigger issue of those heaves. that's fine. I, I really addressing, want to address the, the bigger issue of those heaves and humps that are actually more problematic within our town.
All right, we have a motion on the floor here. So thank you, Counselor Taylor, for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. Uh, Counselor Taylor, do you have any other motions? Council, do you have any further motions? Seeing none, I will, uh, have a couple of motions and we've taken now one off the table. So this should be hopefully fairly quick, or maybe not. Uh, my first motion is that council direct administration to reduce council's FCM conference budget by ten thousand dollars. Uh, so, uh, I'll speak to this. Um, as you know, FCM, um, is expensive to attend. Uh, in the last couple that I have attended, the value for municipality or size has been more and more questionable. Uh, we currently have budget in place, uh, that allows all of council to attend based on our policy. Uh, even though that most, the most that has ever gone in one year since I've been mayor is five. Um, so we've never had full council go, um, to, uh, FCM. So we have, um, that money sitting in the budget that you largely doesn't get used, uh, for that purpose. Uh, depending on location, cost of hotel travel and registration, uh, it can range from three thousand to six thousand dollars to attend FCM. So it's sizable. With FCM in Edmonton next year, costs will be reduced. Uh, and as such, reduction of ten thousand dollars can be easily accommodated, even if all seven, uh, members of council wanted to attend. And I understand that some have already said they probably won't be able to. In future years, we only need to send, uh, maximum of three representatives, which still can be accommodated in the existing budget. Um, and I think this is a way for us to reduce some expense, uh, to, uh, free up some money for my motion that will be coming forward after this. So, um, I just, uh, for those that have been around this table for a while, we never spend our council budget. Uh, we have a lot of extra funds in there. Uh, we do reduce travel. We do, uh, carpooling. I know a member of councils went down to AMA and they, uh, they car pooled. A lot of times things are done virtually now, uh, and those numbers have never been adjusted with our new online meeting procedures for many of our committees. Um, so, um, I just think that this is a, a little bit of amount that we can adjust for, uh, a, a different project here. So, open the floor to questions, comments, concerns. Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Uh, through the mayor, to, to the mayor and the rest of council, this was something that, um, I think we spoke about it last year's budget or perhaps even the budget before that. I'm not quite sure. Um, and although I've never been to FCM, we have had members of council, uh, return from attendance. And I don't know if we were getting the bang for our buck with everybody attending. And I, I just, and again, I've, I've never attended. Uh, at some point, perhaps I will be able to. Um, but I, I just, I don't know whether we were. So, you know, decreasing this budget is, is fine. Still being able to send members of council, the mayor and, and to, obviously the mayor would have first, first crack. I think it's important that he, he be there and two other counselors is, is, is fine. Um, so I'm in support of, of the motion that's on the floor. I'm in support of Mayor Zahara's motion on the floor.
Thank you for that. And I, I do want to clarify, this is kind of going back to what the policy used to be. Um, we did increase it because of how people's schedules were. And some years nobody could go and other years we thought maybe everybody could go. Uh, plus we had a very large contingent at Quebec City, cause it was, uh, around the pipeline debate and trans mountain. And we thought it was really important for our community to, represent energy projects, which worked out very well for us. Uh, but anyway, that's just some of the history there. Uh, Counselor Position.
Yeah, through the mayor, to council. FCM has changed. It, it is a touch long, um, which adds to the expense of it. We haven't in the last three years. I think we spent more than three people every time. So reducing the budget by ten thousand is, is fine. Um, as long as there's ways of, like, for example, um, those who haven't attended, there, there is resolutions very much Alberta means, which we just attended. Uh, but they're federal. It's our federal lobbying. And when we don't have sitting government in Alberta, uh, the only way you get things passed to help Western Canada is through FCM for municipalities. Um, now our provincial government has put in some laws about that, but which is the only affected the big cities. The, uh, the, there has been some big wins out of it and then, it's got a new name by the third time now, but originally it was the gas tax money, which was a huge win to municipalities. We received that money from the feds and that was through the lobbying effort of Federation Canadian Municipalities. So, yeah, we're not, we're not utilizing it. Um, I just, as long as there's a provision in there that if we have a controversy, especially with the pipeline, Alberta does show up in a large attendance. We're one of the largest provinces that shows up there than the ones that are bigger than us. Um, and part of that reason is for years, we didn't have a voice in Ottawa. So our voice for municipalities was through FCM. So, um, it is, it is a big conference. It is a, it is expensive, uh, for sure, especially when, cause it goes east to west. Uh, so this year it's in the west. Next year it'll be in the east. Uh, then you're adding airfare and hotels and such. So I'm not against it. Um, and we haven't been using up our budgets for all of our councils, but, maybe, uh, in a future planning session, we could look at maybe how councils, like, have budgets for conferences that they want to attend. I think there's, some municipalities have a different way of expending it. So, you can go to one or two or not go to them. Like, there's other ways of looking at it, but for sure, I'm not against reducing council's budget, cause we've, we have, we've been leaving a hundred thousand dollars in that budget almost every year. So.
Uh, thanks for that, Counselor Position. Uh, and I think that's a really good discussion, having a look at how we are handling that, cause I, you know, um, unfortunately, I think sometimes we all, we go to things that we don't actually need to be going to, uh, just for the sake of going. If there's something controversial, then we have the opportunity to make a motion to send more people if we need to. So, uh, with that, if there's no further questions, comments or concerns, I will call the question. All those in favor. That motion is carried. All right, this leads me to my next motion. So please bear with me. This is my last motion, by the way. So maybe we'll get out of here by ten o'clock. Uh, that council direct administration include an option in spring budget adjustments to purchase and install Christmas lights, for up to twelve larger trees in Millennium Park. So I'll speak to this. Um, so late, uh, summer, early fall, residents, uh, submitted a letter requesting assistance in lighting large trees in Millennium Park. For the last several years, seniors around the park have volunteered time and money to light up all the smaller trees that they can reach and do so safely. However, many of the larger trees, uh, remain unlit. It has, uh, turned into a very much-used park in the winter time with people strolling through. Um, there's been some inflatables that have been donated and installed. There's music now. And for those that know me, I'm not Mr. Christmas or Mr. Sappy, but I have to say it is a bit magical walking through the park. And the passion that the residents around Millennium Park have for this is just amazing. Uh, I do know administration from a risk management point of view, may cringe at the idea of some community members doing this kind of work on municipal properties. Uh, and just in case somebody gets hurt, and I think that is a, a fair, fair concern. But it really is a, a great addition to the community. And I refuse to be, refuse to be Mr. Grinch that stole Christmas and want to see, uh, support these efforts somehow. Uh, potentially using the funds that we are saving from FCM, uh, that, shows a tangible community wellness impact. Our strategic plan talks about bringing people together. And I think it would further enhance this park. I know we already do, a centennial park, uh, which is much larger, um, and, uh, which is great for the highway corridor and some of the events down there. But this is a little bit more, uh, quaint and a lot of seniors live in that area. And there's a, um, you know, uh, on Christmas Eve, I walked through there and there was just a ton of people after, uh, dinner, uh, walking through there. So, uh, we'd like, uh, uh, administration to research that and bring some ideas forward, uh, in spring adjustments. And then council can decide whether or not we proceed. Uh, but I, I, I do think it's worthy of a discussion based on the letter that I received from, uh, area resident. Um, so with that, I will go to Counselor Position.
Yeah, uh, through the mayor, to the mayor. Are you, is this idea similar to, uh, Centennial Park, where they have a professional company come in and put the strings all up? Or is this where we buy just some lights and then our staff get out a zoom boom and away they go?
Uh, great question, Counselor Position. I think that's what I'm asking administration to research and tell us what is the most feasible for, for their teams. And then, uh, we'll, we'll go from there. Uh, Counselor Taylor.
Uh, through the mayor, to the mayor, um, you're asking to purchase and install. So currently, the, the, those millennium lights are set up by volunteers, residents in the community do a fantastic job, uh, each and every year. Are you saying that, that our staff would then take over that responsibility or just, or just purchase these things? And perhaps assist if necessary, but mostly it's volunteers that still want to, in the community that would take, take, take the initiative and, and set all this up.
Um, so my motion is particularly for the larger trees that can't be lit, um, cause so all the lowers, lower, smaller ones are, but the large trees in the park are not lit. And the request from the resident was to have assistance for those larger trees. There's already power, uh, ample power at the, at the site. So now administration may come back and say, hey, we can do the whole park and this is what it would be. But I would, don't want to take that away from the people around there. This is something that they're very passionate about, until which time they don't want to do it anymore. Um, I, I just think we should be enabling that kind of community involvement in our community. So, I answered your question? All right, thank you. Council, any further questions, comments or concerns? Uh, Counselor Shrem?
Yeah, um, through the chair, to all of council. I've walked that park in, in the Christmas times and it's pretty amazing what those residents do in there. I really support this. And the question about electricity was my main question. It just got answered. If the electrical capacity is there to accommodate those twelve trees, uh, I'm all for this project. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, any further comments or questions? Administration, you have anything you want to add? Okay. Uh, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. I had another motion for a mill and overlay program, but I think that's going to be discussed, uh, in the spring, uh, based on Counselor Taylor's motion earlier. So, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, through the mayor, to the mayor, uh, I know you said a mill and overlay program. So my, my motion is, is about maintenance. Is yours more capital orientated then?
I think we'll have the discussion at.
Are you on? Yeah.
I, I think we'll have the discussion about your program. And I think it's going to talk about the broader road, uh, maintenance and, and the discussion about the, the condition of the roads. And then from there, that'll, uh, give, uh, administration, uh, enough information to bring something back to council.
Thank you.
Uh, otherwise it's kind of talking about the same thing, but different things. So.
I, and I hear it. I like, if you're one capital, one maintenance or one operating, but I agree, one if, and then we have one full discussion to be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, to Counselor Position for that suggestion to bring to committee of the whole. It's perfect. Yeah. All right. Um, so with that, all that stuff, we will move on to our next steps here to approve the budget. Uh, as, should we be doing this as amended, um, or just as it's set out here now that we have those motions taken care of on the floor?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the question, mayor and council. I think the best practice would be just to for, go forward with the motion we have in, on the presentation. And we will make those changes and, uh, implement it into the budget. And, and then you'll finally, you'll see it in the spring adjustments.
All right, sounds good. Perfect. All right. So can I get a motion from the floor, please? Go ahead, Counselor Position.
Yeah, I move that council approve the twenty twenty-six operating budget with a total operating revenue of twenty-seven million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars, with operating expenditures of forty-two million, six hundred ninety-five, one hundred ninety-one dollars, resulting in municipal taxation levy requirements of fifteen million, eight thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars, excluding amortization of five million, five hundred sixty thousand, five hundred forty dollars. And the twenty twenty-six capital budget, which has a total capital revenue of fifty-two million, four hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars to support total costs of, fifty-two million, four hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars.
Thank you, council. Any further questions, comments or concerns? Counselor Taylor.
Uh, through the mayor, to all of council and anybody, and I'll try to make this quick, knowing our, our time is against this. I'm supportive of, of this budget that's been created. Thank you to our administration for, for creating this. This has been, been a long haul. Uh, we are doing exactly what residents want, and that's maintaining services throughout year to year. Two point seven, uh, percent, uh, tax increases is appropriate and, and moderate tax increase is appropriate. I think it's fine. We're continuing to tackle major infrastructure as well as continuing to maintain, uh, maintain infrastructure as well. So that's good. And seeing upgrades to some, so some facilities, such as the tennis court, West Haven Rink and Hillendale Trails, are, are going to be great additions to all those users who use those facilities. Uh, and one thing, uh, as we look at this budget into future budgets, um, of course, we're going to have to continue to get creative. Uh, the minister of finance, as he said last week, in his eerie words to us at municipalities, there's no white knight apparently coming to save the province or save municipalities, as he said. Uh, which is an eerie look in terms of our future, in terms of if we're looking for funding, which will in the future affect municipal funding for infrastructure projects. He was clear on that. Um, so, uh, future budgets could get a little more interesting. And a little, we'll have to get perhaps a little more creative in the future as well. But supportive of, of our administration's work on this and the budgets that's been created.
Thank you, council. Any other comments on this budget? Much like, uh, Counselor Taylor, very supportive of this budget and we actually are doing some really great things. We're actually addressing maintenance issues with our facilities. Uh, information that we didn't have before. It's very daunting. Uh, but, this investment that we're making, starting in this budget, will save this municipality ten, fifteen years from now. And, because we are being more proactive, more preventative, um, and ensuring that we're maintaining service levels in our community. We're actually enhancing in, in some areas. Uh, I am, it's a small budget item, but the summer students for the fire department to do fire smarting in town, I am super excited about that. We talk about fire smarting, we've always relied on grants. But if we don't get those grants, like last year, nothing happens. And we know we are at risk in this community. And we have a lot of trail networks that need some clearing. Um, I know there's a resident up in, in West Haven that continually, uh, uh, messages me about, uh, you know, the trees behind her house and, and the risk that she feels there is, uh, with fires. And this will help, uh, us starting to tackle some of that stuff without relying on funds and actually get some work experience for some, for some youth in our community. So, I think that's really, really great. So, uh, looking forward to that and, uh, seeing, uh, continued investments, uh, throughout the community. Uh, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. And can I get a motion, please, for the, uh, budget plan? Deputy Mayor Fogarty.
I move the council approve in principle the operating budget plan for twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-nine, and the five-year capital plan is presented.
Thank you, council. Any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. Uh, on behalf of council, just want to thank, uh, you, uh, CF McDonald, uh, Mr. Goble and, uh, Ms. Schmidt for being here this evening. And the entire team's, uh, incredible efforts, uh, during this budget process. We were able to get through it and, uh, we will be able to move forward and, and actually administration tomorrow can start planning out our, twenty twenty-six, uh, capital plan. So, uh, that's fantastic. Uh, we have no council committee reports tonight. So we're going to defer that until, uh, our December meeting. No information items. No, no submotion, no closed session items. So I will adjourn this meeting with three minutes to go. Thank you, everyone.